Thursday, August 1st, 2019, the time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Salles.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Gisa.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Also President Village Clerk Haley. Will Trustee Mahalik be joining us?
No, he's absent. He's been there for a commitment. If you'll please join us for the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everyone who is here with us this evening and everybody watching at home. First up, our presentations and public comments. We'll have presentations first. Afterwards, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your remarks from the podium so that the folks can hear and see what you have to say. So first, we have a very happy occasion this evening. We have the swearing in of newly appointed Fire Department Lieutenants Donald Mahalik, James Mulkin, and Daniel Tabb, Chief Buckley.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank President Salles, the members of the Village Board, and Village Manager Francis for allowing me the opportunity to present the newly promoted lieutenants to the Riverside Fire Department. The rank of lieutenant is a very important position in our organization. This is evident by the number of fellow firefighters, residents, and family members who are present here this evening to witness their oath of office. Lieutenants are the frontline supervisors, both at the firehouse and on the scene of an emergency incident. They have a direct line of supervision with the firefighters and report to the command staff. It is also a very important position as we shape the future of our organization. There were six firefighters who went or took part in the promotional process. This process examined and evaluated these members. As a result, there were three firefighters who were offered the position of lieutenant, which they all accepted. I am truly impressed by the six members who took part in this process. It shows their dedication to our organization and their service to our community. The three new lieutenants are Dan Tabb, Jim Mulligan, and DJ Mahalik. Dan has been a member of the Riverside Fire Department for 13 years. He has attained several certifications and qualifications and also serves as the village's Public Works Department as a water operator. Jim Mulligan has been a member of the Riverside Fire Department for seven years. He has attained numerous certifications and qualifications and serves as our Training Officer. He is also a full-time firefighter with the Village of Broadview. DJ Mahalik has been a member of the Riverside Fire Department for six years. He has attained numerous certifications and qualifications and serves as our EMS Coordinator, Public Education Officer, and he's also a full-time firefighter with the Village of Riverdale. At this time, I would like to invite Village Clerk Kathy Haley to issue their oath of office.
Bill?
If you could raise your right hands and repeat after me, and if you could just state your names individually, all right? I.
Dan Tabb.
I.
James Mulligan.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of lieutenant.
Of lieutenant.
Of the Riverside Fire Department.
Of the Riverside Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. As we've done in the past, it's part of our Fire Department tradition that a family member or a spouse pin their badges on them. So this time, I'd ask Colleen Tabb, Anthony Mahalik, and Kevin Mulligan to please come up here and pin on their new lieutenant badges. So introducing our three new lieutenants here at Riverside. All right. Let's get going.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And so, that was a very happy occasion, but we, I think we have something else.
We do.
We're going to talk about tonight. What is that, Chief?
We do. I think he's trying to hide behind me right now. But at this point, I would like to recognize a member of the Riverside Fire Department, Deputy Chief Bill Sherman. Began his career here at the Riverside Fire Department on this day, August 1st, 1974. That was 45 years ago. So to put this in perspective, I was five when Bill started. So that's a few years ago. Lately, Bill's received the prestigious recognition of being named the Person of the Year, but having served his community for 45 years as a firefighter is truly an enormous accomplishment. Bill, I thank you for your many years of service with many more to come, and your family for supporting you all of these years and allowing you to serve the residents of the Village of Riverside. So here's a little plaque to recognize you for those years of service. So on the plaque, it says Deputy Chief William Sherman, recognizing your 45 years of dedicated service, August 1st, 2019. So congratulations, Bill. And I know she's probably not going to be too happy with me, but Bill was able to do all these years of service here at the Fire Department because of a person named Sue Sherman, who has also been by his side on many events where Bill had to leave early with his, you know, from his family at different, you know, Thanksgiving and Christmas. It takes a lot on the family, so we wanted to thank Sue. Come on up, Sue.
I was there 40 of those 45 years.
I know. Do you want to resource your family, Mr.? My son Kevin, two kids, Carly, his wife, daughter Sue, daughter Kelly.
Sue Jr. Yes. He does have a mother's son, but he had a commitment and he couldn't get out of him, so.
And I guess the balloons gave it away. Thank you very much. Give us one second. We're going to move our guys out back next door so they keep it down for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, if I, just before that happens, I would just like to follow up on something that Chief Buckley said. Obviously, we're all very proud and appreciative of our first responders, but I'm really glad that you brought into the subject the families of those first responders, who we also, we just want you to know how much you mean to us and how much we appreciate the nights when you're waiting for them to get home. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You leave.
Yeah.
Okay. So next up this evening is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of village officers. First up is my report. I do have some commission reappointments this evening. These are commissioners who have currently served and their terms have expired and have graciously agreed to continue to serve on their relevant commissions. Jack Lucio to the Economic Development Commission, term to expire 2022. Kathy Maloney and David Rubin to the Landscape Advisory Commission with terms to expire 2022. Jennifer Dvorak to the Parks and Recreation Board, term to expire 2024. Mark Giroux to the Riverside TV Commission, term to expire 2022. And Martha Schroeder to Riverside Historical Commission, term to expire 2022. I would ask for a motion and a second to approve these appointments.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
By Mr. Hannan. Any conversation? Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a Class A1 liquor license to 2M Enterprises doing business as 7-Eleven. They have requested a license increase to allow them to serve or to sell packaged of liquor in addition to beer and wine, which puts them into the same class as the other two convenience stores that are already have that license. So I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
By Mr. Gisa. Any comment? Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening, approve the voucher list of bills for August 1, 2019.
Manager's report.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have?
I do not have a report this evening.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Back to the consent agenda. Approve the Village Board trustee's regular meeting minutes of July 18. File review the Historical Commission meeting minutes of June 17, and the Landscape Advisory Commission meeting minutes of June 11. A resolution commemorating the Centennial of the American Legion. A resolution commemorating the honoring of America's POW/MIA personnel. And a resolution authorizing submittal of a grant application for Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. Funds to be used for the Kent Road Alley Green infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed $129,000. Does anyone need anything removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
By Ms. Evans. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, with regard, this is a discussion of an ADA ramp design in the National Historic Landmark. The Preservation Commission has been looking at, you might have noticed as you walk around town, that where the wheelchair ramps are, the ADA ramps are, there are curbs that are installed. Preservation, and that is as a result of IDOT requirements that we, the village has to install those. The Preservation Commission has suggested that they think that this could negatively impact our national historic status. However, in the agenda packets that we have this evening, there's not really a discussion by them of, on what they're basing that opinion. So I would like to send this back to the Preservation Commission and ask them to give us a stated reason as to how they think it negatively impacts our status. And also, I would like staff to try to get some more information from IDOT as to what the purpose, the public safety purpose of those curbs are. Because what Preservation would like us to do is to ask staff to ask for an exemption from those curbs. So before we can do that, I think we need to know what the public safety ramifications are.
Would it also make sense to understand what the cost would be in adjusting them, or?
Yes, we can do that as well. So with your permission, we'll just table this until a future date after we get that information. Is that all right with everyone?
I agree.
Yes. Thank you. We have no ordinances and resolutions. Our final agenda item is a continued discussion of recreational cannabis and possible referral of the tax amendments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before Director App leads us through that, this, I just want to make clear that the discussion tonight is not a discussion on the merits of whether we want to do this. Really, what we're talking about tonight is whether we want to send it on to, there are three commissions that are going to look at this. The Preservation Commission is going to look at it pursuant to Trustee Peters' request. The Economic Development Commission is going to look at it. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission is also going to look at it, assuming the board sends it their way this evening. So that's kind of where we are tonight. So Director App, would you like to discuss?
So at your last meeting, we had kind of our initial discussion about this and about the Act itself, where we have an option to either opt out or to look at imposing certain regulations on these types of businesses. So we have kind of put together some information for you and a draft ordinance for you on potentially how these could be regulated within the village. So to kind of walk through some options, just to kind of put out what are existing regulations that apply and what are the Tax Act regulations that would apply, just so we kind of have a basis for understanding. The new Act does not allow for public consumption of cannabis. So people cannot be walking around on public sidewalks or whatever, smoking or doing cannabis. So that's, that has not been legalized as part of the Cannabis Tax Act. Consuming cannabis while driving in a vehicle or in a vehicle is also prohibited. So that was not allowed by the Tax Act. We also have a smoke-free ordinance for the village. So any, there prohibits smoking in any enclosed public spaces or on school grounds, in any of our parks or playgrounds, at any stadiums that we might have, or within 25 feet of a public entrance or outdoor dining area. So that's our Smoke-Free Ordinance Act. We also revised the definition of what smoke was when e-cigarettes became more of an issue. So smoke also includes the use of vaping sticks, e-cigarettes, and any of the gases or vapors that come out of those sorts of devices. So we tried to kind of encompass things like that as well into that ordinance. So presumably, any way you might smoke it, you cannot be doing within 25 feet of an entrance. You can't be doing it in our public parks. You can't be doing it at stadiums. You can't be doing it at playgrounds. Additionally, the Tax Act, this Cannabis Regulation Tax Act, also gives private property owners the ability to say it's not allowed. So if you were an apartment building owner, you can say you're not allowed to do that in this building. So private property owners also have rights to restrict what they can allow happening on their property as well. From a zoning perspective, currently our cannabis, currently a cannabis dispensary would be classified as a retail sales establishment, as our definition for retail sales establishment is written. In the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Act, when that pilot program came about, it contained certain restrictions in there that said that a dispensary could not be located in a residential district, and it could not be located within 1,000 feet of the property line of any public or private preschool or elementary school or secondary school, any daycare center, any home daycare, or any part-day childcare facility. So these restrictions eliminated the possibility of a medical dispensary locating within our central business district at that time due to proximities of like St. Mary's School and Central and Hauser Schools. So at that time, there wasn't a possibility that a dispensary could locate in the downtown. And given where certain daycares and other things were, it pretty much precluded most of Harlem Avenue at that time as well. So there was a very small portion of the village where it would have been possible to locate a dispensary based on those regulations at that time. The newly enacted Cannabis Regulation Tax Act, however, does not have those same restrictions within it for recreational-use dispensaries. So it only restricts a dispensary from being located within 1,500 feet of another dispensary, and that is the only location regulation on it as part of that Act. So if the village does not modify its zoning code or adopt an opt-out ordinance, cannabis dispensaries would be considered a permitted use as our retail sales establishment definition is written, and could go in any of our commercial zoning districts as a permitted use. So considerations for the village then are, do we want to allow the following cannabis uses? Do we want to allow dispensaries, infusers, cannabis cafes or lounges, those that would allow some sort of onsite consumption of the products? Do we want to allow cannabis cultivators, processors, craft growers, or transporters? Staff does not believe that these uses, the cultivators, the growers, the transporters, that these are appropriate uses for our commercial districts. They're a much higher intensity use, and I don't think are compatible with how our commercial districts purposes and intents are written. So I would not say that those would be consistent with those for our B1 or B2 districts, but the other ones are things that we can consider and I think would be considered consistent with how those are kind of written if we want to move that route. If the village wants to allow one or more of those uses, doesn't want to further than restrict the location of those uses, you can be specific and limiting it to specific zoning district. So if we only wanted to allow them in the B1, if we only wanted to allow them in the B1C of the B1, we can go that route. If you want to even further regulate it, you do have the option of designating it as a special use. If you classify it as a special use, you can put certain standards on it, and that allows you to evaluate each application for a special use on an application basis. And you can look at things like its location and the standards you have set in your code to see if this is an appropriate use for that location, or if there are certain conditions you want to put on it to make it so it does not have an adverse impact on that area. Some of those standards and conditions could include things like 1,000 feet from any elementary school or secondary school. So you can put kind of like a distance restriction on it. You can set minimum parking requirements. You can restrict your limit signage or window displays. You could restrict the hours of operation even further than what the state regulations are. The state does allow 6:00 AM to 10:00, 10:00 PM? Yes, 10:00 PM for their, for their hours of operation per their licensing standards. You can also require certain things for reviews and consideration. So you can ask to see their safety plan and their lighting plan. You can ask them to provide a traffic study or a parking study, things like that as you're evaluating that application. We can do things like requiring a parking enforcement agreement with our police department so that if they have a private parking lot, they can enter into an agreement for the police department to be able to, to monitor, ticket, and enforce parking regulations on that parking lot. We can also require a cooperation agreement with our police department if we want to, to be able to use things like their security videos or to have them kind of collaborative work on any violations or things that might happen from a public safety perspective out there. Our village attorney has drafted a zoning tax amendment for your consideration that does the following. It only allows dispensaries. So a cannabis dispenser would be the only use that would be allowed. It would only be allowed in the B1C zoning district. The B1C zoning district is located on Harlem Avenue and a little bit of Ogden Avenue right there at that intersection of Harlem and Ogden Avenue. It classifies it as a special use and then does establish some standards in there. So some of the standards include the 1,000-foot buffer that I talked about before. It's from any school, and specifically prohibits any onsite consumption. So cafes would be an option. It prohibits the sale of alcohols. The Tax Act also does that, but this kind of clearly states there shall be no alcohol sales happening at this location. It prohibits the display of any product visible from the public street, sidewalk, or other public space, so that you would not be able to see, you know, canisters of things or paraphernalia, things that would be part of like window displays in the windows. That would be required to not be there for general display. Additionally, I don't think I mentioned it earlier, the state does have specific restrictions on signage. So they can't say words like cannabis. They can't show the plant leaf in any of their signage if they are within 1,000 feet of a playground, school, things like that. So there are some restrictions about signage as well on a state level that we can also incorporate into our sign ordinance, and that we can require that they obviously have to follow those or be a little bit more restrictive if we want to in that regard. So, let's see. I did provide some additional information for you as we talked about at the last meeting. The primary place this is going to be going is with the existing medical dispensary operators. So they are getting first go at the licenses. So those are the companies that are going to be looking at either expanding their current locations or looking for new locations. So I did provide a list and a map of kind of the Chicago-area medical dispensaries that are currently licensed with the state, so you could kind of get an idea of where they are currently. And then we have some other information that we provided you, including a map that shows that 1,000-foot buffer from around our schools. We forgot to include Morton West. So that 1,000-foot is not in there, and that would kind of take out that B1 area that's from like Long Common. Well, basically from the, is it Citgo? It's not Citgo anymore, is it? It is Citgo. From the gas station there's at Long Common and Harlem, basically from there up to 26th Street would kind of be within that 1,000-foot ring from Morton West.
Just to add one thing, under the draft that you have for you, it also includes the cooperation with the village, with the police with regard to security cameras and things like that. So that's, that's already in the draft that you have. And, are you finished? I just wanted to ask Chief Weitzel to explain one thing that you mentioned to us the other For the folks who don't follow the zoning, I mean, the special use gives the village an enormous amount of leeway as to how to regulate things. And one of the things that Chief Weitzel talked to the manager and I about the other day was requiring businesses, you know, potential dispensary, to allow the police to make stops without having been called first by the property owner. Can you, can you just explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, certainly. Director App actually alluded to it a little bit, that we could enter an agreement that would allow us to make on-view stops or citations or arrests if it rose to that level, and they'll do those proactive without receiving a call from the establishment to say, for example, there's a car parked illegally, or there's this person hanging around my building. An officer saw that, they could drive into the parking lot, and they could take either preventative or enforcement action on their own without the business being the complainant, which, it is a very important aspect, I believe, because a lot of times, business, they call us, but they don't necessarily want to be the person that signs their name to the complaint. They don't want to go to court, they don't want, there's other issues involved there. That would, that agreement would allow officers to do that. It would be mostly ordinance violations, I would say, parking violations, or say, for example, currently, if we give somebody a cannabis ticket right now in Riverside, it's a parking ticket for $150 fine. The paraphernalia is $100 fine, the cannabis possession is $150 fine, and quite frankly, most of those citations are issued at high school for those types of minor violations. We no longer arrest. But this would, this would allow us to go onto the property proactively instead of waiting to receive a call from the business owner.
So that's something that as part of the special use, we could require of business owners. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
So, discussion, please.
I would like to know if that arrangement is common, if business owners are, do they welcome that service?
I would say it's been common in parking enforcement. For example, we're allowed to right now issue parking tickets at Harlem and Ogden at the, what used to be the McNeil Professional, I think it's Laola owns that now. So, and what a big aspect is that, is when they draft those agreements, it also really, it also gives us protection for officers that trip and fall on their property, or we have a workman's comp claim, it could give the village some more protection with that. But they're, they're more common for traffic enforcement and parking enforcement. But I do believe that the, you'll see the communities that go the direction of having dispensaries will work this requirement into their requirements. Because it really, what sense is there for an officer to be on patrol and not be able to take a preventative action or enforcement action on his or her own without? to take a preventative action or enforcement action on his or her own without having to receive the complaint from that private business or, especially in this type of industry? So I do believe that you'll see that more often. But right now, I would say that all the agencies I know of have contracts for parking and traffic enforcement. And a real good example of that is malls. So if you have a mall in your town, you probably have an agreement with the mall, the owners of the mall, for the police to do accident reports, issue parking tickets, and do traffic enforcement. Because usually the mall property is private. So that's common in any police department has a mall in their town.
Other comments or questions?
I was going to ask, if that's appropriate, what area that might prove valuable in addition to the parking and traffic is in the area of loitering, which, or trespass, which normally you absolutely need the property owner to be 100% on board with, but if there were an agreement, you could define certain situations that the owner makes that anticipates what somebody who's not invited and if the police were able to identify that situation, it could be prosecuted locally without any involvement of the property. I've seen that as a valuable tool. In certain cases, I'm not saying that would be a problem here, but as, just as a safeguard, it could be.
It could be included.
I would agree totally.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question. I think in the medical marijuana law, there was a restriction for 1,000-foot view around schools and libraries. I would want to see libraries added to this.
That would be something we would add locally.
Yeah, I'd want to see that added.
Just a question. There is a library across at Harlem and Long Common, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
So I think that would, you know, I'd like to look into that and see, you know, how that affects various availability of locations for dispensaries.
Well, they just, yeah, Sonya just said that was gone anyway.
Oh, is Morton's there? Okay.
But I do, more proactively in the future. I mean, that intersection has kids crossing it all the time to go to that library, which is what instigated my concern. But I think in the future, regardless of where Morton is or where other libraries are, I would want to make sure that that area is treated the same as a school. And just to confirm, we're not, we're just voting to pass this on to?
Yes, we're just asking to send it to the commissions.
I mean, my position has changed dramatically since the last meeting. Speaking to a lot of people and reading, I would prefer to opt out of this and not do it and not even spending more time on it. It has to do with three main arguments for some of the other revenue generating opportunities that I was supportive of in the past, and those are safety, addiction, and brand. I think that of all the emails I read that have been sent, there was one that said that people moved to Riverside to raise their families and that we move here understanding that we're going to have to spend a little bit more in order to raise our kids in that community. That comes to our property taxes. And while an extra 300 grand would be nice, I just don't think it's worth introducing this. And I think that I disagree wholeheartedly with rushing into this and thinking that just because we're not the first ones there means we won't have the opportunity to do this in the future. I think that with something that's this unique and it's changing really the way communities are going to be branded, I think it's important to take our time, see what happens to other communities like ours and the impact it has on them. Because I think there'll be plenty of opportunities with the 1,500-foot limit to add a head shop on Harlem Avenue down the road. But so, I know I'm probably the only one, but I'd prefer you to opt out and just move forward with more important matters with regard to, you know, infrastructure, safety, and community.
President Salz.
If I may comment. Couple of issues and I know, first of all, I want to thank the residents. We received a number of emails. All of them were, I'd say most of them were well thought out, providing the information. It really was educational for me personally to hear some of the concerns. But, you know, I, at least the emails I received, were in favor of not opting out. I think one of the issues that I continue to struggle with, and I'm always loving to hear more public comment, is, you know, the border issue that I talked about last time. That if we have a, something on the east side of Harlem versus the west side of Harlem, you know, somebody sent over a study about crime statistics. Well, adding an across the street still puts them in the radius of increased crime under their study. So that's not going to increase crime. Chief Weitzel noted that under our mutual aid agreements with other villages and cities, we're still going to have the extra police costs of policing. But, you know, the comments about village brand, especially when it comes to Harlem Avenue, I'm still not there yet. I mean, we've had a pawn shop, we've had, we have a tarot card reader. We just voted tonight at our third gas station with full liquor. We had a bartending school for a long time. I mean, I don't see how any of those are consistent with a brand. And, you know, we just sat here today and voted on allowing a hard liquor license for yet another location, which is within your 1,000 feet of a library, and nobody seemed to care. Nobody seems to worry about the increased drunk driving that's going to come from that. So I, you know, I question some of those concerns. But, you know, for me, I think we all need to step back and separate legalization of cannabis from what we're trying to talk about today. You know, as Director Aft mentioned, advertising is permitted. I don't know how many people have been to California. I hopped into a cab and right there on the little screen that I usually get to watch little Oprah or Conan as I drive around, every 30 seconds was an ad for Puffy.com, which is internet home delivery of legalized cannabis in California. There's also ads that pop up on websites when you're on your phone, when you're looking at Facebook. I'm anticipating, you know, I don't know if TV advertisement, radio advertisement is going to be permitted in Illinois, but this is going to be a game changer as far as where it is. You know, one thing I did not hear today is an evaluation on upping the fines. You know, we have the fines that Chief Weitzel agreed. Do we want to be the town that's known as you don't light up in a public area? Is it a $1,000 fine? Is that some sort of range where people will definitely think twice on sitting in a parked car on a side street smoking? I mean, I think that's something to explore. And I can't tell you, I'm just given a great deal of comfort at, you know, the agreement that Chief Weitzel explained, that getting them, as part of them coming to the village, the police get to go on premises, the priests don't have to be called, they can self-enforce. As I said, I love the idea of Riverside being in charge of policing those communities as opposed to relying on how our neighboring communities are going to do that. But, you know, my last point, and really goes to Trustee Jiza, I don't think we could ignore the fiscal effects that we're considering here. Last meeting, two meetings ago, we had a roomful of people, half of which were here to talk about vehicle stickers, pricing, senior discounts, whether a trailer was. You know, we're walking away from an estimate, call it conservatively, $200,000 per year. You know, and I know, we have deferred maintenance issues on village property, we have capital expenditure issues, we're told over and over that we need a new fire house to accommodate the new bigger equipment that we need to protect the village. How are we going to pay for that if we let this opportunity run away? Are people ready for $200, $250 vehicle stickers? Because our options to raise revenue in the village are limited. And if we're going to walk away from $300,000, I ask everybody who's saying I'm not for it to come up with a suggestion on how do we fill that bucket? Because we do have police and fire pension shortfalls that we have to cover. As I mentioned, the capital expenditures, as I mentioned, the deferred maintenance. You know, I don't think we could go back to brand when cannabis is going to be everywhere. So, you know, I just want us to get our head out of the clouds a little bit and focus on adding one dispensary on Harlem Avenue when we already have, everything else we have on Harlem Avenue, you know, we've got to take it in some perspective here and can't ignore the economics. So, you know, hopefully the feedback we have today will focus on that. I think the limitations on the special use is a great step in the right direction. You know, I'd really like to focus on that rather than, you know, a discussion on opting out or, you know, how it hurts our brand in light of everything else.
First of all, your head in the clouds is a perfect analogy, because of the smoke or whatever. But I think, and I get it, right? Like I, again, I chased revenue on the gaming issue and I don't have an issue with gaming. I don't smoke weed. But on this one, I feel hypocritical based on the referendum. I went back and watched some of those meetings and safety, addiction, and brand were the key components to it. I can't disagree with you enough. I don't think liquor is the same as this. I think that what I'm suggesting is we opt out for now, right? I don't think, every good investor knows, you don't, most, you don't need to rush into an investment, at least I don't, right? Everyone's going to sit there and tell us we're going to make $200,000, $300,000. Of course they're going to say that. But you and I both know from what we do in our professional lives that, you know, what people want in a multiple isn't always necessary what they get in a multiple. I don't think that people are not going to smoke the weed right when they get in their car. I guarantee you, they're going to pop their gummies, right? They can do walking down the street. I think we need to identify areas to fill the bucket. I'm hoping that our appeal on the red light cameras will generate the income we need and the safety, improve safety we need. I just think that for right now, there's no need for us to rush into it. I'm saying, I'm not saying it's off the table by any means, I'm just saying I don't think it's consistent with what Riverside aspires to be. That's, and brand aspires to be, I just, let me finish. So when I say aspires to be, I moved here, my kids ride their bikes around, I want Harlem Avenue. We invested $300,000 in a lot on Harlem Avenue next to Title Max in order to improve the entryway into Riverside. We tore down a building, we excavated it, we made this investment, and a lot of what the previous board talked about was making the entrances into Riverside better. I don't, first of all, the dispenser can't be there now, so the only place it can be is on Loyola's campus, which is not going to be, or at the corner of Herrick and Long Common, which is incredibly close to, you know, 50, 60 feet away from private homes that are just behind those buildings on Harlem. I just think that we can sit and watch what mistakes other communities make and the opportunity to do this will always be there. For right now, the emails I received were primarily opposed and it all went back to one thing. This is a family environment where we pay a little bit extra in property tax in some of the surrounding communities in order to live that idyllic life. And I, you know, again, maybe I'm naive, maybe I'm being a hypocrite, but that's what I aspire for.
Well, in light of the vote to grant a hard liquor license, I think you are, but I think...
I disagree. Let me ask a question. Would you let, I would sit around and have a vodka tonic in front of my children. I would not sit around and smoke a bowl in front of my children.
And that's, and that's, under the ordinance, you can say cannabis can't be consumed.
But the point is, there's a stigma against it, right? And I mean, you know that, I know that, we're friends outside of this. I think you would agree with me that if Katie and Judy were in the room, we'd be okay having a cocktail, but we certainly wouldn't be okay smoking a bowl.
There's people that view that differently.
Well, of course there are.
With respect to drinking in front of their children as well. But I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue we have is, you know, our brand, again, I go back to, if it's across the street in Harlem, on the east side of Harlem, how does that not affect our community? I mean, I...
It will affect our community.
I think that the point is, is that we want to have a standard that's different than that. And frankly, the fact that it's on the other side of Harlem, that shouldn't really matter about what we want to do in Riverside. And I can tell you, the Economic Development Commission has been looking at the Harlem Business District, trying to think about ways to really revolutionize that area. So to think of it in terms of what it looks like today is not necessarily fair about looking at where it wants, where we want it to go. And Bank of America, perfect example. That area is really a prime place to have a retail and housing division that could potentially really change the whole face of Harlem. It could. Maybe it won't, maybe it will. But I wanted to jump into, because I think the alcohol argument is frustrating to me as well. I agree with what Trustee Jiza has said throughout the whole night. I am, I'm in favor of opting out. If there's other folks that are as well, enough to not move this forward, that's fine. But I'm also happy to send this to the commissions to get their opinion. But I wanted to touch base on the alcohol because the difference to me is that this is an established, alcohol is an established activity. This is a newly introduced activity. And I know you, you might say that's semantics, but there's a big difference to me between something that we already have, two other facilities that are selling alcohol, similar to what 7-Eleven is wanting to do. And the fact that no one in this area is selling cannabis at this point. And I think Trustee Jiza hits it on the nail on the head when he says, waiting to see how this plays out is a better option to understand how it's going to affect our brand. Because to me, this is not some, this is not a genie we can put back in the bottle, right? And I don't really want our village to be the guinea pig for what really does it do to safety? What really does it do to the kids who are walking by? If this is available more, if this is right next door and more available, that means it's more available to our kids and they're going to get it more likely. That's my opinion, maybe, but how do you know that's not the case? You don't. Because we don't know what it looks like in communities that have been able to establish this in Illinois.
We have the largest state in our country that made it legal. We have a lot of examples on how it works. So I, again, I go, and again, I just am somewhat shocked that, you know, we're willing to walk away from this opportunity without even exploring more. That, you know, we're going to hope that we have economic development on Harlem. I mean, how long did the old Henninger site sit before we had economic development there? And that was kind of a happy accident. You know, I think the issue is enforcement, the issue is having Chief Weitzel and his team being the tip of the spear on making sure our brand is protected by not having something so close, but not something that we can have these types of cooperation agreements where, you know, if it's across the street on Harlem or Ogden, you know, does somebody have to call the police on people sitting on the side of the street, smoking in their car? Or can the chief just go up there? You know, that's the question. So, you know, it is a difficult situation, but I want everyone to appreciate, if you haven't been to California, if you haven't been to Colorado, legalization changes the whole perspective. Marijuana will be here. People will be smoking at parties. People will be eating gummies. People will be watching TV and seeing a cannabis ad. There's nothing we in this room can do about that. And you say, let's wait and see what happens, you know, I make the analogy to the Harlem corridor with the grocery stores. You know, we have, how many, there's no room for another grocery store on Harlem. We're not going to get one. And I see that happening with cannabis. I mean, you say the, you know, late investor, you know, makes the money, you know...
Smart investor, not a patient.
I think this is a unique situation, being on the front end and, again, given the sort of kite string and paperclips that we have with the deferred maintenance, with the capital expenditures, I found it very hard, you know, to walk away from this, you know, given the fact that we have addressed some of the zoning concerns and the enforcement concerns. So, you know, we can leave that discussion for now.
I wanted to just make one big point between the two groups. As President Salz said, this really isn't about the merits. And the one thing everybody should realize is that those who want to opt out do want to still refer this matter to the commissions. Because recall what Sonya Aft said, which is, if you do nothing... Because recall what Sonia Amos said, which is, if you do nothing, it's allowed with no regulation basically, except the general business regulations that are in your code. I just want people to realize that. So, you don't want to, if you, whether you want to allow it with some regulation or you don't want to allow it at all, you want it to go for a public hearing. I just want to make that.
Yeah, I just said that, because I just wanted to, then I'll call. Just so that we don't lose sight here, I mean, what we're, what we're hearing is exactly what I was hoping to hear, is, is a community discussion about the pros and cons of this. One very important aspect of that with regard to the economic development question would be to have our Economic Development Commission have a chance to talk about it. Our Preservation Commission, who, that, their, their, their whole reason for being is to protect the kind of thing you're talking about. I would like to hear from them. You know, if we, if, there are things that, that we have missed in here with regard, with regard to zoning requirements, I would like to hear from our Planning and Zoning Commission to just, before we start making these decisions, we need to hear from as many people and get as much advice as we can. So, I just-
Can I ask the chief to come to the podium, please? Okay. Okay, we did have a facility that was suspending illegal drugs on Burlington Street in downtown, did we not?
We had a, you referring to the doctor's office? Yeah, but there, there's still some legalities going on with that, but yes, you're correct.
Okay, what issues arose when that activity was happening?
As far as police calls for service?
Yeah.
Well, our police calls for service ranged from reporting people, other business owners reporting suspicious people, suspicious cars, people walking around early waiting for the establishment to open up. Sometimes they'd report that there was a line forming in front of the, the building, and those types of incidents. But when it was open here, when it was open, we made one, one criminal arrest there during the time it was open, and that was for a drug-related and warrant issue. I will say that was kind of a, okay, that was a, a really touchy issue for us now that it's out, but there were multiple investigations going on at the, at that establishment, and they were federal investigations. So, while we, I was being briefed as the police chief, I wasn't allowed to speak about it during the, in, in, in fact, I was served with a federal subpoena to not talk about that during that investigation. So, it is, it's still, there are still parts of it that are pending, but, so there might have been things going on that, you know, the federal, the FBI or DEA was handling, and we were, we were asked to stay out of that while they conducted their investigation.
Okay, if we had another facility, do you believe your department would be able to handle that type of activity, and police properly?
Yeah, well, so, I mean, if we had a cannabis district, yeah, you know, my agency can handle whatever the village puts on us. Well, you can be, I can assure you. Will it increase our calls for service? I'm sure that we'll get, you know, initially, we'll get increased calls for service, mostly, as our village attorney said, maybe vacancy or people hanging around or suspicious cars or activities. The chiefs that I've talked to in other states, they've done a variety of things, such as that most of the calls for service come from immediate residences, people that live near there, because it's increased traffic and parking. Some chiefs have taken a very proactive approach. One of the chiefs in Colorado put a police car for the first 30 days his first dispensary was opened across the street to just have a marked police car. But he had the establishment pay the overtime. So, there wasn't a single, there wasn't a single penny that the village incurred over that. And so, while the establishment was open just to set a standard, this chief, who I was referred to by the International Chiefs Association, he stationed a police guy there from 6:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night for the first 30 days, just to get the message out that we're there. And that was in agreement with the establishment. So, they, you know, they weren't calling, wondering why the police are out in front of their place all the time. It was just a way to get the community to know that we know what's going on and we have a police presence. So, there are, there are a variety of techniques we could, we could use. But they did those in full cooperation with the establishment.
So, yes, please.
I just wanted to follow up on what Liz said. There is a, a lot we don't know about what would happen or what it's going to look like. I have a teen and a tween. I don't want them smoking. I don't want them to see people smoking everywhere. I don't want them to see advertising everywhere, but it sounds like we're not, it's not going to be anything we can control. But I do know there is a growing body of research on the impact of cannabis legalization in communities. You know, there's that Journal of the American Medical Association. They analyze CDC data on more than 1.4 million high school students between 1993 and 2017, and in states that legalize recreational use, teen marijuana use dropped. There was a-
Did you say, like, that it had a drop?
A drop. The Philadelphia Federal Reserve investigated the local effects of marijuana legalization and neighborhood crime in Denver, Colorado, and found retail dispensaries had led to reduced crime in the neighborhoods where they are located. And that was a black by black study. An analysis, the analysis of the detailed crime categories provided evidence that the reduction in crime arose from a disruption of illicit markets. So, the regulation forces the illicit markets to stop or disband or go away. There's other research too, that I could just send you later, but the point is, other are, at least 14 other communities that we know of from the materials in the, in the, in the packet that have looked at the impact of legalization. So, it's not totally like we don't know what's going to happen. You know, we can take some information from the studies that are out there and hope for the best.
So, I think I'm correct, like, when Attorney Boylina said this, am I correct that we do want to at least send this on to the commission, the commissions for further analysis?
I do want to hear what they have to say, yes.
And then it will come back to us for, for a final decision?
Absolutely. And the, and the public notice will be such that if the recommendations, you'll still have the authority to opt out after the appropriate public hearings.
Yeah, they're going to be looking at this.
Either way, you'll have full discretion.
And I would encourage the public to keep sending us emails and communications or concerns, so we can address those and keep our thinking caps on and how to, how to go about this.
And I, just to complete it, I do have a note from Trustee Pollock that he asked me to read. Says, "I believe we have an obligation to the community to proceed with this consideration in a thorough and expeditions manner. As such, I'm hoping that the trustees will send this issue to the Plan Commission and to the Economic Development Commission and ask them to consider the impact on Riverside from each of their unique perspectives. I would also ask that the committee chairs and our village staff manage that process so the final decision may be made by the board trustees as soon as the process will allow." That's from Trustee Pollock. I saw some folks walk in while we were having this discussion. Did anyone want to have anything to say to the board? Yes, or please, if you'll step up to the podium, just give your name.
My name is Mike McGillicuddy. My wife, Mary, and I have been Riverside residents for 30 years. I wanted to say that I'm speaking as a resident of Riverside, a parent of three sons and three grandchildren. I'm a licensed clinical social worker with about 16 years of experience working in substance abuse treatment. I'm retired from McNeil down the road, and now I'm a volunteer at Cook County Jail, and I work with people that are struggling with substance abuse, mandated to substance abuse treatment within Cook County Jail. I, I want to be clear about what I, what I want to speak to and what I don't want to speak to. So, for example, I'm not interested in speaking to the issue of the wisdom of the Illinois statute, what the penalties ought to be for infractions. I, I actually believe that there are exaggerated claims made by both proponents and opponents on this particular issue. So, here's what I've seen and what I believe to be the case in my own experience. I believe, and there is, I, I think that this is incontrovertible. Marijuana can be addictive. That isn't to say that everyone who's exposed to marijuana becomes addicted, but marijuana absolutely can be addicted, addictive. And the, the issue with, with the comparison to alcohol is very complicated, because as I think Trustee Peters said, okay, Trustee Peters says, "You're introducing a new intoxicant, relatively new intoxicant to the community." So, we have a, a large number of people with alcohol who have established a pattern of social use where they really don't even get a buzz from it, right? It's just a ritualized experience that people have. There isn't the same tradition that has been established for marijuana. So, we're introducing a, a new intoxicant. So, I, I think that if, there is somewhat of a difference between those two things. The second thing is that the brain, as I understand it, and this is, I think, reflects the best of the clinical information, the brain is not fully formed until age 25. And so, persistent use of marijuana by adolescents is absolutely, again, I believe incontrovertibly linked to psychosis. I mean, we, we see it all the time. Regular users from early teens are, have, are very much at a higher risk of, of psychosis. And that psychosis is irreversible. This is irreversible. I, I believe that the evidence is very clear that a persistent use of marijuana reduces motivation, it impairs decision-making. I think that there's a lot of misunderstanding that is generational here. I, I've worked a lot with the parents of young people who feel very reluctant to, to, and feel hypocritical about forbidding marijuana use among their children, but they don't understand the difference between Woodstock weed and the weed that's present in the western suburbs in 2019. There is a difference. It's, the potency is substantially higher. And then there is this issue of the pathway, and this is very contested, the issue of the pathway-
Sir, could I interrupt you just a second? I'm sorry to, but the, the comments that you're making really are going to whether or not marijuana should be legal.
No, I don't believe so, Chairman Salza. That's not the point that I'm making. I started off by saying that I'm taking no position on that, and that's what I was not going to speak about.
That, that's what I'm hearing, so I'll, I'll, I'll listen more carefully.
Okay, so I, I absolutely am not here to speak to that issue about whether it should be legal or not. What I'm talking about is whether, I, I'm very much persuaded by the two trustees at this table position about the, the branding of, and the kind of community that we want to be. And I'm not unconcerned with the issue that Trustee Hannan brings up about where do we fill in the, the economic things. For, as, as one taxpayer in Riverside, I'm, I'm committed to paying whatever taxes are required in order to have the, the quality of life that I moved here 30 years ago for, right? And I, I, I resist the, the implication that we have to legalize, or, or, not legalize, normalize, which is what I think was, is involved. Normalize marijuana in order to acquire the revenue to run this village. I, I just, I just don't think that that's true. So, I do think that availability can lead to normalization. We know that, I think that the literature from Colorado, I believe actually that the governor of Colorado said that, "Why don't the rest of those U states sit back and watch what happens here?" Right? And we have, there's a lot to learn. And the literature, I mean, of course, the literature, the presentation of the research is dependent on sort of your frame of references, but from what I read, that we're, we're seeing a lot of involvement of big tobacco in ownership of, of, of areas. We're finding auto fatalities rising and difficult to police because there isn't an easy, like, you can't do a breathalyzer for marijuana. I think that we are finding that the revenue promises are misleading because that there's a continuing black market, because obviously the taxes raise the price, the retail price, which is, can be undercut by the, by the, by the market. And that the candy issue is especially pernicious. Those of you that are my age remember candy cigarettes and how that, that was sort of removed from the market or stigmatized, because the inference was that it would suggest, it would, it would make it easier to move into real cigarettes. And I think that the candy form of marijuana has the same thing. The last thing that I'd like to say has to do with firewalls. In my work at Cook County Jail with people that are in mandated treatment, one of the things that I talk about is firewalls, in that the, the people that, as they leave jail, need to create a firewall to protect them from moving back into the life that they were in before. These are people with, with abuse issues, right? And so, you sort of think, what can I do to sort of create a situation where I'm not likely to, to, to give in to the magnet that pulls me back into the old life? Well, one of the things is you create distance, right? You create some distance. And I know that Harlem's just a few blocks away, and I know that, I'm assuming that marijuana's going to be easily available in Berlin, and it may be in Lyons too, in Brookfield, who knows? But it does create some distance. The ability to say, "This community has decided, notwithstanding the loss of revenue, that this isn't the, the kind of product that we want," I think is valuable. And so, my recommendation would be that we hold off on this, see how it plays out elsewhere, deeply research what's coming out of the state of Washington and the state of Colorado particularly, and see if this is in accord with the kind of community we want Riverside to be. Thank you.
My name is Mary Slocum, and I also want to opt out for the time being, because I think we just don't know enough. There has to be a lot more research on the short and long-term effects. I just researched the NIH National Institute on Drug Abuse article that they just updated in July 2019. And in that study, there was a big study done that compared people involved with current and former long-term heavy use of marijuana with the control group who, who reported smoking marijuana at least once in their lives, but not more than 50 times. All participants had similar education and income backgrounds, but significant differences were found in their educational attainment. Fewer of those who engaged in heavy cannabis use completed college, and more had yearly household incomes of less than $30,000. When asked how marijuana affected their cognitive abilities, career achievements, social lives, and physical and mental health, the majority of those who used heavily, heavily reported that marijuana had negative effects in all these areas of their lives. So, but a lot more research, we don't have, especially, there's been a lot of research on adolescents for sure, which really affects the part of their brain negatively. But later adults, we don't have enough research yet. But, but still, I agree with those who are saying, "We don't need to have this, we can wait and see in Riverside, and let's keep our children safer, our adolescents safer, and our whole family values here, and echo values safe here in Riverside by opting out at the present time." Thank you.
Anyone else? Harry Nunn, we, we have no need for new business this evening, and we also don't need an executive session, so I'd ask for a motion to second to the chair.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
By Mr. Jesus, please call the roll.
So, do you want to do a motion to refer the matter to those various commissions?
I, I got consensus.
As long as everybody's up.
Yeah. Please.
Thank you. If you're comfortable with it.
Call him, please.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks for your good night.